America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Bud Metz.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bessassi.
Here.
Diestis.
Present.
Sanica.
Here.
With seven present, but no microphones. They were working earlier. We tested them. We have been having audio visual issues and they were supposed to be corrected. I think they are. It might just be a little snag. But we do have seven present and none absent, so there is a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's television cable channel. Is it working yet? I think it's working now. It might just be a little bit low. Slightly. Good to go? Okay. Then we'll continue for now, and the first order of business here is to approve the council minutes from previous city council and committee of the whole sessions. The first one is the October fifteenth, twenty nineteen committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second?
I didn't want to get that.
Thank you, Siri. Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the October fifteenth committee of the whole meeting minutes are approved. The next is November twelfth, twenty nineteen city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve these meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. Is there a second? Thank you again, Alderman Cannon. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall these minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, so those minutes are approved. I think they're working, but I don't know. I just don't know. Well, moving on, mayor's report. Not much to report on, however, a couple of things I do have are really significant. I found out earlier today from Commissioner Kevin Morris and from Cook County. He called to provide an early congratulations. We did receive the grant funding from the application we put out for the census twenty twenty outreach, so that does help our census committee with our efforts to make sure that there is a complete count this year in April of twenty twenty. In addition to that, we have a lot of holiday events coming up, and we look forward to everything that's on this holiday calendar. Are there any ward reports this time? No ward reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one, real quick one. I already talked to Director Horn on this. A couple residents had approached me about possibility of restriping crosswalks, and I learned that for myself. It's something we do look at in the springtime generally, specifically along Campbell at Florrie by the park, and also at Campbell and Rowland. So Director Horn informed me, just said it's probably something we'll do into the new year because after mid-November, it doesn't adhere or adhes correctly to the pavement, so Director Horn's going to take a look at that.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. I wasn't aware of the schedule on the road striping either. For crosswalks, you said?
For crosswalks, right. They were concerned about the park by Florrie, and then also at Rowland and Campbell where dead ends there.
Cool. Thank you. Well, if there aren't any other... Alderman Bessassi?
Basically, this is mostly for the people in the fifth ward. We're having an informational session, town hall type thing at the library on January sixteenth at seven o'clock. It should be in the news and views as well.
Good. Congratulations. Good luck with it. I hope positive turnout for you. Any other ward reports? Good. Well, then that'll bring us on to the next section, which is opening the floor for twenty minutes, and we do have a couple names on the sign-in sheet. There's five to be exact. However, before calling the names up, I am going to read a couple guidelines for those who do speak to follow. And per the rules of procedures, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council would respond does not mean that the city council is not listening or agrees to or disagrees from or with that comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Provision A, each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted twenty minutes that's open for the city and the public to speak. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. That said, the first name on the list is Joey Z. Zone?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Joey Zone. I'm a resident in Rolling Meadows. I have been living in this neighborhood for, since two thousand and six. So I came here tonight to just against the recreational marijuana sale in the city of Rolling Meadows. If possible, I would suggest statewide or even nationwide ban for selling recreational marijuana, but I am very disappointed, you know, tonight, because this is what I can do, just, you know, stand here to against it for my city. So as everyone knows, that there are many problems we, if we open the door of recreational marijuana sale, people are easy to get addicted to this drug and as entry level drug. People are very easy to move up or upgrade to the next level drug like cocaine, or even worse. And you can see, I brought my two sons here, and we saw a lot of children here. A lot of children are here with us. So the reason is here, we against it to protect our children. We know that even we have some restrictions, like we selling alcohol, but if we open this door, you know, a lot of things, bad things could happen, you know. A lot of, we have research results saying if people take marijuana, and it's very easy to get addicted and then overdose and cause a lot of traffic issue. And if we sell it here in the city of Rolling Meadows, I am afraid, you know, in this is a small city, and this, we have a lot of, you know, traffic here and cause a lot of problem. I talked to our chief police officer there, and he has the same concern. And also, I really against it because I want to protect my children. I don't want them to be, you know, setting this temptation when they are still young. So I urge you here, our my dear representatives, to stand with us and to against it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the sign-in sheet is Joseph Q.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Joseph Chan. I live in Palatine, just next door to Rolling Meadow. Actually, I send my, my son to Rolling Meadow basketball team, and we go to Rolling Meadow library very often, almost every week. So if Rolling Meadows on fire, we're in danger, not only smoke, right? So I read the agenda of, of the committee of the whole of November nineteenth. In the staff summary part, it says, Rolling Meadow has had a very good experience with nature care as a medical dispensary in the community, and believes they were retaining a responsible business partner in the evolution from medical only dispensary to an adult use dispensary. It sounds like a toy store sells toy gun, very experienced, very experienced, okay? Then we give him license to let us sell real gun, right? Because the users of recreational marijuana and the medical marijuana are completely different. The users for medical marijuana is someone who is seriously sick and disabled, maybe. They cannot, they will not drive after eating, after taking marijuana. They won't share to anybody else. But the recreational marijuana users are completely different. They're healthy people. After taking that, they will drive, no matter how long. Sometimes in, on Friday evening, they take marijuana for fun. Then on Monday morning, they drive to work, but still, their motor skill is still bad. Their reaction time is still delayed. It will cause serious problem. Okay, so based on the, the police report from Colorado Police Department, it says marijuana-related traffic deaths, when a driver was positive for marijuana, a more than double percent increase during the same period, all traffic deaths increased sixteen percent. In the first five, five areas that legalized recreational marijuana, it is now the leading cause of drug treatment among youth. So it's a big problem if, you know, recreational marijuana start using in this, in this area. And the second difference is that the product are completely different. And medical marijuana is well legal, well regulated, so it's prescribed by the doctor, so the users know how to use it. And the content of THC is constant, right? But the recreational marijuana is completely different. The content of THC is from ten percent to ninety-five percent. No regulation at all, right? So it, yeah. So I just don't, obviously, I think Rolling Meadow is not ready for recreational marijuana, not at all. In order to keep our community safe and secure, I just want to urge you to follow the voters, because you are elected officers, instead of follow the staffs there someone pointed, okay? So please vote opt-out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next name is Susan S.
Hi. Good evening. I live in Palatine, so it's pretty close to Rolling Meadows. And actually, my son go to the Rolling Meadow Park District and library, and my church is in Rolling Meadows, just across street. So actually, we are in the same community. I love this area. We're peace, peaceful, and we all like in a good education area, and then so, but this time, the legalization of the, you, the sale of recreational marijuana in Illinois makes me very worried. And so I don't want to have this happen in our community, in our city. So I remembered in two years ago, there was one incident happened in Naperville North High School. Total of fourteen students were taken to Edward Hospital right after they ate Lays' gummy bears containing marijuana-related substance. So it was reported that this candy made those students both uncomfortable and sick. They have been experiencing symptoms including accelerated heart rate, agitation, dizziness, and dry mouth. Three under seventeen years old students were charged with delivery of marijuana. So we don't want to see similar incident happened in our school, our neighborhood, and our community. So imagine if recreational marijuana are opt-in. It would increase deliberate or accidental use by underage population. So in order to keep our school safe, our children safe, our community safe, please vote opt-out to sale of recreational marijuana. At least zoning one miles away from school and residential area and recreational area, the parks, and churches, schools, all those like children easy access places, and also the heavy traffic places, so to avoid like car accidents. So, yeah, to protect our underage people. Thank you.
Next name on the list is Ryan. Are you going to go together? Okay. Ryan and Dave.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'm David Patterson.
And this is Ryan Guma. So since May, we've been going through this process in Limbo, and we have been transparent through the whole process and been patiently waiting for several months, starting with the initial meetings with the city manager and the mayor. And what we said back then is still true today. We are a food and beverage driven restaurant with a full-time kitchen. We have been approved by the Illinois Gaming Board since April. We understand that the village is trying to better define its gaming ordinance, and we support that and appreciate it. It appears that, you know, all these months later, the city still appears to be at a crossroads as to the direction you want to take gaming. In the interim, our business concept hasn't changed. We have stuck to our plan and kept consistent with what we do and who we are. We want to reinvest in our business and staff. We want to create more jobs. We want to increase our hours. I'm sure most of you know that we don't open up until four, but we'd like to open up earlier, open up at eleven for lunchtime. We've been involved already with community events that we've done, and we want to do more. We want to do more with the community events and get involved deeper. I've been at my restaurant in Hoffman Estates for thirteen years, and we've been very successful. We were food, beverage over there as well, and we have gaming. At a restaurant in Mundeline for five years. I have the experience in this industry, and that was why I got involved with Big B's, is to be a food and beverage driven type establishment. In Addison, Big B's is celebrating its ten years. Here in Rolling Meadows, we just celebrated five years. And even in Addison, after we've had the gaming now for seven months, we still remain a food and beverage driven business with gaming only as a supplement to our overall business model. And that's what we are looking for, for the same thing here in Rolling Meadows. As we speak right now, we have an event going on at our Rolling Meadows location with one of the local businesses here. And they had a party last week. They have a party this week, and we are looking to do more of that type of stuff and for the holidays. City will still maintain, obviously, full control of who gets approved, because every applicant has to come in front of the city council. And we know there was a lot of concerns expressed earlier in our meetings about where it would go and where it would end, and we appreciate that you guys still maintain that full control. And we feel that the gaming law and local ordinances were created exactly for businesses like ours to help existing bars and restaurants survive and thrive. We're hoping you make a decision in our favor, so we can supplement and improve our business and remain the committee for years to come. Thank you all for your consideration, and thank you.
Thank you. This next name, I apologize, I'm going to announce it phonetically, and maybe have to spell it, but it's Jiao, J-I-A-O. Please correct me.
Oh, it's perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, it's amazing. You said it right the first time. So good evening, everyone. I'm here, this is my first time at the city council. I haven't been here because everything was great. I was, I have been a resident since two thousand and twelve, and this is, I think, and my daughter grew up here. So I'm here today because I heard that we are going to introduce recreational marijuana in the city. To me, it's a no-brainer that we should say no, of course not. I don't know why that's an option for us to have that in the city, because I haven't heard anything good about recreational marijuana. So have you heard anything good about it? If not, so what is the justification for us to introduce recreational marijuana to our wonderful city? We have all the wonderful parks. We have the best library in the neighborhood, the most friendly librarians I have ever seen. Why do we want to introduce something that could harm our youngsters, our teenagers? Because of the money? What is the justification? I'm not here to persuade anyone. I'm just here to understand. What good will recreational marijuana do to our wonderful city? A place everyone call home, the sweet home of Rolling Meadow. What is the justification? Please help me to understand. I don't understand, because for me, it's just a no-brainer. No! So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last name on the list is Dee or Dai, D-I? Dai?
Dee or Dai.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this precious chance to speak tonight. I'm not a resident in Rolling Meadows, but I had ever lived in Arlington Heights for two years. My hometown in Illinois is twenty years ago, and I know the restaurants and churches all around here, so I have deep emotion for this piece of land. Plus, my good friend lives here. So I came here and to express my deep, deep appeal regarding opt-out for recreational marijuana, I want to talk a little bit about Vernon Hills. On September twenty-fourth, we held our first hearing, public hearing, and what our city do is, the first place is the place no other towns will, 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 will made the same decision. It's Vernon Hills High School. It's Blue Ribbon High School. How could we talk about a topic regarding a drug to be opened or not at a high school? So that makes first impression that the whole board of trustee will vote opt-out, no doubt about that. And then later on, we have two hundred and fifty people go into Vernon Hills High School. Among all the speaker, one hundred and fifty-three are in. However, there are more people want to say in, but they have no, no courage, you know. They dare not to say, because people all are parents, you know, for their kids. Plus, the school, the district director and the school principal, these expressed strong against. They said no drug in our city. So I respect them very much. They also invite Dr. Weiner, who is the director of addiction, drug addiction control center. And Dr. Weiner was invited for other hearings, you know, later on. People welcome him, you know, overwhelmingly, you know. So today, I came here, I really appreciate, I'm not a resident, but I want to say that our deep voice, as you know from the T-shirt, we want it to be opt-out, and we are so helpless and heartbroken for so many cities that they have already opted in. Let's say what Illinois, Illinois leader has done for our homeland. It can be explained by analogy, as if somebody deliberately dug a big hole in our city and put a sign at the side road, side of the road, saying, there is a deep pit over there. It's very fun. If you are twenty-one-year-old and older, you are qualified to play over there with your payment, with your check, with your cash, not check, not credit card, only cash. But no one can guarantee you can get out of it safely, because that hole has a sucking magic power. If you want to choose to get into that hole, that's your own business for your own fund. You are the person to pay for all the consequences. We have nothing to do with you. That's your option, your decision. So dear officers, officials, the state of Illinois has made a very big mistake. We are not asking you, upright, decent person to be responsible for their faults, but we can at least, as a person, ask you, please listen to your conscience, you know, as a person, as a human being. Look at the little ones. Look at the young adults with age twenty-one. Do you call them real adults? No. They're, if that's your kids, you will treat them as kids still, right? So please, please, for the sake... So, please, please, for the sake of your family, for the sake of yourself, for the sake of God, please opt-out. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the section for, but it's not on the sign-in sheet. No, I'm sorry. It has to be signed in before the meeting commences. That brings us now to pending ordinances. And we are looking at the first ordinance, which is 19-48. Amend Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages to allow the sale of beer and growlers and crowlers. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and nobody opposed, so this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to item B, ordinance number 19-49. Authorize the repeal of the sunset provision for the city's electric use tax. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunoika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Besessi.
No.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this ordinance is adopted. That brings us to item C, ordinance number 19-50. Amend Chapter 10, amusements and entertainment of the code of ordinances to prohibit sweepstakes machines within the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted as well. This brings us to line item D, and that is resolution number 19-R-119. Award a contract for professional engineering services for proposed drainage study in the northwest industrial area. This was originally postponed on November 12th, 2019 city council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Diestis. Thank you, Alderman Sunoika for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall this resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. Moving on to line item E, resolution number 19-R-120. Award a construction contract for Lot 5 drainage improvement project. This too was postponed at the November 12th, 2019 city council meeting. Request to postpone now until December 17th of 2019 city council meeting. Is there a motion to postpone this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Diestis. Thank you, Alderman Sunoika. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall this resolution be postponed until December 17th, 2019? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunoika.
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and nobody's opposed, so this resolution will be postponed until December 17th. Line item F, ordinance number 19-00. Amend alcohol liquor code to approve a Class G1 liquor license for video gaming for Big B's Poorhouse located at 1649 El Gonquin Road. This has been postponed a series of times, beginning August 13th, then August 27th and October 22nd city council meeting. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Seconded.
Thank you, Alderman Sunoika for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna say, I am gonna vote in favor this time. I've talked to both vested parties. The request I would have, which I know, because based on the direction of the council before, we didn't want to make any adaptations to the current ordinance, is talking to the vested parties. They both did seem interested. If at a near-term council meeting, we could revisit the restrictions, the possibility of the three within a half-mile radius or things like that. But I will be voting in favor this time with the hopes of it'll come back that we could put some of the restrictions previously talked about on the table.
Noted. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Besessi.
Yes. I'll also be voting yes on this, mainly due to the reason that we had an opportunity at the last meeting to say that we did not want bars to be part of this. The decision there was that we did. So, for that reason, I'll be voting yes, because there's nothing in the current ordinance to say we shouldn't.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, without further discussion, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for a second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diestis.
No.
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
No.
With five in favor and two opposed, this ordinance will be moved forward for a second reading. That brings us now to line item G, resolution number 19-R-64. And that's to approve National League of Cities Voting and Alternate Voting Delegate Appointment. This was pulled by me historically back on May 14th of 2019 city council meeting. At which time, I discovered that there is no changing of the bylaws, and so the mayor would act as the voting delegate appointment alternate. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sunoika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall this be adopted? This resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This now brings us to the consent ordinances for this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question for our parliamentarian. If I have a question regarding the Leaky Keg application, do I also need to then pull all of H, I, and J since it will require a text amendment and then the approval of a special use?
Yes, if your questions relate to both the text amendment and the actual use, you should pull those items. If you want, discuss them on that.
Okay, and if I just want it to be regarding the special use itself, or the, or... My concern is that I pull one of these, but then it's affected by the other two. Or the other three that are involved with this special use and the manufacturing, because I have H, which is for microbreweries, I, and J. And my concern is just on the actual application itself in the building that is being used.
Then the recommendation, because discussion, consent, the consent agenda should contain no discussion on the items. So, the recommendation, if your concern is related to the special use, you can pull that one item. And that would be fine. If it implicates the other matters, it's okay. It's still relevant to your discussion on the actual use. So, you can pull that one item. J, I believe is what you're talking about?
Yes, it would then be J.
Question answered for now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, moving back on for this, the consent ordinances in for first reading, they consist of seven items, H through N. Does any Alderman wish to remove an item or items from this list? Alderman Sunoika, I'm going to say it's J. And Alderman Budmats.
M.
M. And any others from any other Alderman person. That now makes five items on the list. The chair declares it in order for one motion to consider those five ordinances. In one motion without debate, is there such a motion to consider the ordinances for first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunoika. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Beginning with H, ordinance number 19-00. Amend Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages of the code of ordinances to include microbreweries, micro distilleries, and micro wineries. Line item I, approve a text amendment to city of Rolling Meadows zoning code of ordinances to allow microbreweries as special use in the M1 manufacturing district named Leaky Keg Brewing, 5101 Newport Drive, Unit 7, in for first reading. Line item K, approve a text amendment to the city of Rolling Meadows zoning code of ordinances to allow recreational marijuana cultivation and dispensing facilities as special use in the M1 manufacturing district, Nature's Care, 975 Rowling Road. Line item L, approve special use to allow recreational marijuana cultivation and dispensing facilities in an M1 manufacturing district, Nature's Care, 975 Rowling Road. And line item N, amend Chapter 13 of the Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances to establish an expiration date of December 31st, 2024 for Article 11 rental dwellings unless specifically extended by action of the city council. The question is, shall those ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunoika.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
That does leave it with seven in favor and none opposed. Those ordinances will move forward for second reading. I'm gonna pause for a minute for a water. Now circling back to item J. Approve special use to allow a microbrewery in an M1 manufacturing district, Leaky Keg Brewing, 5101 Newport Drive, Unit 7. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance moving forward?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunoika. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Alderman Sunoika, you pulled this. You can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for staff regarding the inter-office memorandum from the fire marshal, which had the request of installing sprinkler systems, and I just want to make sure that I understand that if we are to then grant the special use to Leaky Keg, that this is contingent upon making sure that they're up to fire code?
Excuse me. If you give me one minute, please.
Of course. I'm looking at page 123 in our packet.
I have it in front of me. Thank you.
Okay.
So, from my, from my understanding from what the fire marshal writes here, it would be contingent on the sprinkler being compliant at a date, which he would work with the staff to provide in the occupancy.
Okay. So, that is to say then, everything needs to be up to code, no matter what, is what this is saying? Is that there seems to be a deficiency that they would have to work on before opening or being operational?
Well, I will defer to community, or Robin, excuse me.
There were no special conditions given to the petitioner related to any building code regulations. They're going to have to comply entirely with all current codes.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
All set, Alderman Diestis? Er, excuse me. I was looking at Alderman Diestis. Alderman Sunoika, are you all good?
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Diestis or other members, are there any other conversation or discussion? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this might just be for staff as well, based on the same, I believe it was in the same document, about manufacture, sale of manufacturing things on-site. My understanding is that they might, from the planning zoning comments, is that they have interest in selling potentially hats, sweatshirts, branded stuff that may be made off-site for sale on-site. That wouldn't prohibit them from selling their own logoed material, is that correct? Because I wouldn't want them to have to come back and ask for that just because it was made off-site.
No, we left it that off-site's still allowed, but if you want Leaky Keg, I'm sure that Steve and his group would be more than happy to sell you anywhere. You can drive on Cardinal and there's a Leaky Keg area, but it doesn't restrict them.
Perfect. Thank you.
All set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Further comments or discussion on this item? Wonderful. The question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Besessi.
Yes.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sunoika. Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will move forward for second reading. That pulls us over to line item M. Amend the liquor, the alcohol liquor code to approve a Class G1 liquor license for video gaming for Sally's Restaurant located at 1913 South Plum Grove Road. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Thank you, Alderman Diestis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Alderman Budmats, you pulled this one. You're up to bat.
After watching what we've been going through with trying to get a resolution to item number... Sorry. F for Big B's Poorhouse, and the fellow's been waiting since August and prior. I'd really like to see more information and get the chance to go through Sally's Restaurant and see what they're doing, see their application. We've heard nothing from them. We were told in the, in the council, the council meeting, that we would get lots of information and we'd have a lot to work with. I have nothing to work with, so I have no reason to approve this at this time until we can get someplace with this. So, I'm gonna be voting no unless we can get some information.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Is there further discussion, Alderman Sunoika?
I would like to move to open the floor for Sally's to have the opportunity to discuss their business plan in more detail tonight.
Sally is present, and does Sally's have sufficient information on hand regarding their business plan to open the floor and have a discussion with council? A brief discussion? With that said, is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion second.
Okay. All those in favor to open the floor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so we can open the floor if Sally's would like to come up. Alderman Sunoika, I will allow you to begin the series of questioning.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Yeah, Steve Appostolu.
Okay, do you mind if I call you Steve?
Yeah.
You do mind? Or Steve's fine, okay.
Go ahead.
So, Steve, unfortunately, we just have the name of Sally's and an address regarding this particular license. Could you please explain to the council a little bit more about your business and what you sell in addition to liquor for the gaming license?
Sure. This will be a full-running restaurant lunch. We, we did send the menu a couple times. I know...
Could you pull the microphone up, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, we're, the, the reason of, or we're opening Sally's to have basically like a full-time lunch and restaurant. You know, we've been in the community for 13 years, working in the restaurant business, and that's what we're looking to do. Right now in that certain area in 1913, there's about four other restaurants that are doing really well that have all been there for about, I think, five years minimum. So, yeah, we're looking up to opening new location.
To confirm, are you currently operational?
No. Inside, no, no. We're, we just did construction, so the last tenant in there was over three years ago. So, it's on the corner. I think it's a, it's a good opportunity to have a full-running restaurant.
We don't have the menu in front of us. Could you give us a couple of items?
Sure. So, we are Greek, so my father comes from the gyro business. So, our main thing is to have really good, authentic, Greek-style gyro. Now, we also are adding, it's more comfort food now, like burgers, your chicken sandwiches, your paninis. We have some breakfast items as well. It's more light items in the morning, but, you know, it's about 20 different items and I can send you that menu, you know, as soon as, tonight.
We have a vote before us now, so that's why I'm...
Yeah, so any details that you can provide now would be helpful for the, for the vote for us. Yeah. So any details that you can provide now would be helpful for the, for the vote for us.
As far as what, what items we have or what?
Yeah. So, but you've explained it, so that, that.
Okay.
Manager Crumstock, you.
So just to elaborate, obviously, and obviously Alderman Diastis is on the Economic Development Committee. This is any of the new restaurants that actually come into the city of Rolling Meadows. We do bring them to the Economic Development Committee. We bring their menus. We go over that too. So Alderman Diastis, who sits on the Economic Development, just like what we did with Isabel's and obviously Daisy's, we brought their menu in. So again, to give you the full menu, and we do have that, obviously, there is a breakfast section that talks about croissants, bagels, hot muffins, cheese sandwiches, Belgian waffles. But the lunch and dinner menu that Steve has been talking about is burgers. There's grilled cheese sandwiches, the panini that I mentioned, the gyro sandwich, the chicken panini, then there's hot dogs. Beverages, there are there, and they actually have a cousin, the name of the microbrew that he actually owns in the city of Chicago is called Maplewood. So they're bringing one, their IPAs to this organization. But typically with new restaurants and even any of the gaming establishments, we've gone through that with the Economic Development Committee where they look at all those things. So what's in front of you has not been done differently with Isabel's, and it was not done differently from Daisy's. The only different one that has gone through a lot more scrutiny is obviously Big B and the difference. But Stadium and Rep's Place and Grande Jake's were established restaurants. So again, what you see in front of you is what we've done for everybody else in their establishment. So again, that's why we use the Economic Development Committee to vet through and go through. You've already established the liquor license for them, and that's what they brought to the Illinois Gaming for their gaming license. The G one is that next license that comes through. But all those kind of things, there is no technically an application yet until you give us the G one, and then we send them the application that they're actually done. So this is our standard operating that we've always done. The menu that we have, and the menu has actually gone through different derivations, obviously with a different mayor. But their construction is almost done. And again, as Steve has mentioned, as a few of us know, they own the shopping center where this is going in. It's been vacant for a long time. We hope that future point they actually do outside seating. It's a little close to the road, but it does have a nice sidewalk over there. But their plan is, and they do run other establishments, not just the Meridian banquet that's in the city, but they have a long established record of running areas. They've seen the void, but they've also seen that need. And this is their location that they're actually talking about lunch and dinner a little bit longer. We've also talked to them about using their cousin's location in the microbrew to maybe do some tastings and some other thing organization that would actually help them too. And we've been very frank with them, but also with the Economic Development Committee when we talked about them.
Alderman Bessesi, you had your.
How is the gaming part of the business separated from the food side of the business? Is it like in a separate room? Is it a?
Yeah, it's, it's separated. So as you walk in, it's first all your tables and then your service counter. Towards the back is the gaming, where that would be, and the kitchen and the restroom areas. I know they went through certain restrictions and, you know, we worked with what you guys needed. So yeah, it'll be.
Trying to picture if it's more like, you know, like Daisy's or is it?
It's about fifteen hundred square feet. I think it might be a little bit.
It is bigger.
I'm sorry?
It is bigger.
It is a little bit bigger than, than Daisy's. Yeah. But yeah, I mean.
Is the gaming and everything very visible from the eating?
No, it's, it's separated. It's not a full wall, but it's like a half-wall. So you can't, as you walk in, you can't even see the games. I mean, they're not set up obviously yet. They're still construction, but it would, it's, it's in a completely separate section. It is open, but it's like a half-wall. I don't know how to explain it, but you know, it's, you don't walk in and just see games. You see all the tables with the service counter and the menu will be there first.
So very suitable if a family.
Oh, yeah.
Were to come in with their kids and.
Yes.
They wouldn't necessarily be.
Correct. Yeah. The games are in the back corner of where you walk in. So they're in the opposite side.
Thank you.
Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, in my opinion, you're awfully humble up there. I think it might be really helpful to the council if you could talk a little bit about the other operations your family runs and the experience you have in video gaming. There's not many people who walk in and have as much experience as your family does.
Yeah, I'm not a good public speaker at all.
No, no, I understand. Don't, don't be nervous, but I think you have a lot of good things to tell us.
So I've had over twenty years of experience in restaurant myself. I'm fairly younger. From fifteen years old, I busted, busted tables. I bartended. So I know from the bottom to the top. Now I manage the Meridian. For thirteen years I've been the GM. And it's not easy, you know? We have over three hundred fifty events a year. So opening this place, we know it's a huge risk and that's, that's all we kind of know, you know? We have another banquet, the Carlisle Banquet, which is just as busy. They have about three hundred events a year as well. So my brother watches that place. And we have another steakhouse in Burbank, and that has gaming. It's been very successful. First it's a restaurant, then it's the gaming for over, I think, eight years now, and it's really helped with, with everything. So.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking us through a little bit of your background. I do want to focus our time though on Sally's.
Sure.
And it's good to understand a little bit of your credentials. But before we open the floor, I asked if you would be able to have a sufficient conversation on the marketing plan. And then you briefly touched on your menu and gyros and hamburgers and things. Fifteen hundred square feet on the size of the retail establishment.
Correct.
What size is allocated to the kitchen?
So the kitchen is fairly small. I think it's about two hundred fifty square feet, but it's, it's closed up. So I mean, there's, you know, there's a full grill with a hood. It's not gonna be a full kitchen, but it'll have everything to cook, you know, what we need. And we feel like it's a, it's a, it's a good plan with the menu that we have. It's not really interfering with other places. We have, you know, the Thai place, we have a ramen house, we have the Subway. So this is comfort food, and I think it'll do well with the food.
Okay. And then so general equipment to prepare the food. Can you take me through a list of what that consists of? I know you mentioned a grill and a hood.
Sure.
Freezer space.
Grill, correct. A little walk-in cooler. There will be a freezer attachment to that. Full-size sink, small dishwasher, little microwave, flat-top grill. I think we said that in an oven. So, and this will be, you know, packed in a small area, but you know, it's getting there.
And serving liquor, alcohol?
Correct. Yes. Well, it'll be beer and wine. We're not sure about the spirits. We're getting the, the license for the spirits, but I don't know if we wanna.
And how many employees are you looking to, to bring on?
Well, two, two full-time, two at this, you know, one to cook and then one to be on the floor. But you know, if we get busier, we're, we're all here. We're all hands on deck here.
And so projections with, with busy, how many patrons do you anticipate entertaining at any given time?
How many? So we're gonna be able to seat around thirty-five at once.
Okay.
This is without the outdoor space that we kind of talked about, and maybe six more on the, on the countertop, if you want to call it the service table, which will kind of make a countertop with stools. So about thirty-six.
And then from your business plan, the target demographic that you're looking to bring in your establishment, how does that fit with the demographic in the city of Rolling Meadows as residents? Are you looking to bring in residents from other towns?
For, for both. I mean, obviously, we would want people from the community to come. And I think a lot of people, if you go to that area at night, they really gather because those restaurants are open pretty late. So at first, we want to start obviously within the city, but of course, like the ramen house, I know they, they're on the Chicago Eater, top two best places to eat ramen, and people are coming from the city. One of my friends called me and drove twenty-three miles to come there. So hopefully it's like that.
Okay. And then your hours of operation, what are you anticipating?
We're thinking about eight AM till about twelve at night.
And then employing local? Are you looking to employ local D F staff?
We already put up some, some ads, and so we have twenty-five employees at the Meridian. So I already maybe got a couple of those guys to, to work there. So.
Thank you.
It's working pretty.
Any further questions?
I have a few.
Alderman Budmats.
So I'm on the state gaming license, and there's nothing named Sally that's approved. Could you tell me the corporate entity that is approved for this gaming license?
You know, I have to check. You know, my brother did the paperwork. I think it's under Sally's, but you know, I can ask and get back to him. I don't want to tell you the.
Right. And whoever the officers are of the corporation?
Yeah, it'll be myself, my brother and sister. It's all three of us. So Bill Teen and Steve Appostolu.
Okay. Yeah. It's just that there's nothing named Sally's on the approved gaming website. That's, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. I apologize.
No, no. It's, it's great. And then we were, you're set up as an LLC, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay. Just because when we were looking at working our thing, we're trying to figure out who the partners are so that the building, the business is sold at some point in the future. We, we understand that the, the license shouldn't, we're, we're trying to make the license doesn't transfer, so everybody gets looked at individually. So that's, that's the reason for the question. So thank you. Alderman Beniziano, then O'Brien, then Cannon.
So two questions for you. What part of your revenue are you anticipate getting from the gaming?
The gaming? I would hope twenty percent. I really want the food to, you know, to make it. So I, we're, you know, we're, we're relying on food. That's what we've done. That's what we know, and hopefully twenty percent.
So my second question is, why apply for the G one when you're not even?
Um, no, we, we can do that. Yeah. It's just, we want to get a head start and get the ball rolling because you've heard it takes long. And at our other establishment, it took a little while to, to get the licensing in. We just wanted to, you know, get ahead of the game a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
You finished?
Mm-hmm.
Alderman O'Brien.
Hopefully an easy one, Steve. Assuming it does move forward, what's your anticipated open date? After, I know you said you've got a little bit of the construction left to go, so early New Year, probably like another forty-five to sixty days type thing?
Construction's supposed to be done by next week. Now, you know how these guys kind of work, as they say, one week and it takes four weeks. But I would say ideally, I mean.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One last thought, Steve. This is a personal thing because it's in my ward. One of the problems I have with Ramen House, it's a wonderful restaurant, but it always advertises themselves as being in Palatine. So when you do some advertising, I would just ask if you at least consider putting our name in there? Thank you. Thanks so much. We're looking forward to having you onboard. Thank you.
Any further comments or discussion at this time? Alderman O'Brien.
To follow up on Mr. Budmats, because I was trying to search the same thing. I did find it. It's under the pending applications. Sally's, I'm guessing it's nineteen thirteen South Plum Grove Road. What's, but it does have the Palatine zip code, so that might, because I was trying to search for it too, and I couldn't find it by our zip code, but it's zip code six zero zero six seven, because I was looking for the same thing.
Yeah, I was just looking under licensees. So, okay.
It took me three documents to go through, approved, pending, and then the combined one. What's that? It does say Sally's Gaming LLC, and then, right, nineteen thirteen South Plum Grove Road, Rolling Meadows, but the zip is six oh oh six seven on the website. Sure.
So is, question for council, is it premature for us to approve an application for a G one license for, for entity that's not already approved as a gaming licensee, if their, if their application is still pending?
There, are you asking me?
I'm asking you, yeah.
Okay. There's nothing that precludes you from approving your license and opening it up for them to have it once they're licensed by the state. I mean, obviously, they can't operate unless they have the state license. So there's, there's nothing that precludes you from doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we finished with our discussions or questions at this time? I'd like a motion to close the floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the floor? Thank you Alderman Cannon.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the floor and resuming?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We now close the floor and return back to line item M. Is there any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
No.
Bessesi.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this ordinance will be moved forward for a second reading. This now brings us down to a new business, and that is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you Alderman Bessesi. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and nobody opposed, so the warrant is approved. This now brings us to the consent resolutions, which consist of two items, items P and Q. Does any Alderman wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Wonderful. Seeing none, the Chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the two resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien. Resolution P is the resolution, line item P, resolution number nineteen dash R dash one two two, is to accept the twenty twenty library budget. And line item Q, resolution number nineteen dash R dash one two three, to adopt the twenty twenty city budget. The question is, shall the two resolutions be adopted? So will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This now moves the council on to other business and reports. At this time, for the mayor's appointments, I do have three individuals who are being reappointed to the library board. They've been on there for quite some time, and they continue to stay dedicated and do good work for the, the board. At this time, what I would like to do, because they are all three specifically reappointments for the same board, I would just like to have yea or nay from, from the council. So for all those in favor of the appointment of the three individuals, Jean Threadgill, Mary Ertuck, and Eunice Semple, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Those three individuals are now reappointed to the library board. The mayor does not have any proclamations at this time. Does the city clerk have anything to report?
I do not.
Wonderful. Thank you. That now brings us down to city staff reports. We'll start with community items of interest with manager Crumstock.
To be the longest, but I do have a long report. Obviously, we do want to mention that this Thursday and Friday, City Hall and Public Works will be closed in some observance of Thanksgiving holiday. Refuge collection will be delayed. So Thursday rights, routes will be collected on Friday. Friday routes will be collected on Saturday. As what was mentioned a little bit earlier in another meeting, yard waste collection has been extended by one week to the end of December sixth, so please have your items out. And then obviously with leaves falling, rain falling, snow falling, all those kind of things falling, just a friendly reminder, please do not dump or blow any of those leaves into the street or down the sewers. We do have our street sweepers working throughout the community. Obviously, one is the contractor, and when it does snow, we do have the trucks out there. Then we do want to remind people that for at least until December sixth, the Rolling Meadows has again partnered with the U.S. State's Marine Corps Reserves to collect Toys for Tots. And again, delivery locations are here at City Hall at thirty-six hundred Kurtoff Road and at the Rolling Meadows Library. And again, toy donations will be accepted through the December sixth date. Then obviously, going a little bit longer, the City Swank and Elgin Recycling are conducting a holiday light recycling program. And again, those collection boxes are here at City Hall. This program goes all the way until February fourteenth, twenty twenty. Then we do want to mention about a new item this year. The Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce will be bringing Santa Claus in early. The Rolling Meadows Shopping Center will be conducting a visit with Santa and photo with Santa. Center will be conducting a visit with Santa and photo with Santa on Sunday, December first, from eleven AM to two-thirty PM. He will be at the Hallmark from eleven to twelve-thirty. Then from one to two-thirty, he will be at Rep's Place. And then what we do ask is that people bring in a non-perishable food item. And what we're going to do with that food item is actually give it to the police department for their food donation collection that they're going to be doing on Saturday, December seventh. So if you can show up to December first, have the food donation that will go to the December seventh. Then we do want to mention the big event that we keep on reminding people about. The city will be conducting its annual Tree Light event, lighting event on Thursday, December fifth. It starts promptly at six PM. Santa will make his appearance again. You know, he goes back up to North Pole, comes back, loves Rolling Meadows. So this year's appearance will happen at the tree outside of the Historical Museum at thirty-one hundred Central Road. Right after he makes his appearance and we do the tree lighting, we hope that the community will come to the spaghetti dinner, and you'll hear more about that. That will be at Willow Bend Elementary School, and while supplies last, and that food comes from the stadium. And you'll hear a little bit more about that in a little bit. We do want to mention again, as I mentioned before, that Saturday, December seventh, the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be conducting a food drive outside of the Jewel Osco located at three thousand Kurtoff Road from ten AM to two PM. All collections that will be collected for those food donations will be going to the Palatine Township, and actually, we're going to give some to the Elk Grove Township, two townships that really do serve Rolling Meadows. Then what we do want to mention is that the Rolling Meadows Police Department needs your help to spread some holiday joy for some Rolling Meadows disadvantaged children. This year, only Walmart has graciously agreed to host the Fourth Annual Shop with a Cot event. They have committed limited funds, and we are asking people listening to me, anybody who we keep on asking for, if you would be able to buy Walmart gift cards, please donate them by noon on December sixth to the police department, so they know how many families they can invite to shop with a cot. If you have any questions, please contact Chief Nowacki to my left. If you're watching on the video, it might be on my right, but, or if you have any other questions, it's eight-four-seven-three-nine-four-eight-five-hundred. Then we do want to remind people that the city blood drive with, by talent, which is formerly LifeSource, will be conducted on December eighteenth between one PM and seven PM here at City Hall. We do want to make the comment that if you'd like to serve a city committee, commission, or an ad hoc city committee, please contact Mayor Gallo. There still are vacancies on planning and zoning commission. There's actually, as we heard a little bit earlier, the ad hoc census twenty-twenty complete count. So again, please contact Mayor Gallo or contact City Hall, and we'll put you in contact with Mayor Gallo. And then, before I get to two more other items, I do want to mention the future topics for the December committee meetings. The main two committees that we have, Economic Development Committee will be meeting Tuesday, December third, at six PM. That is actually before our seven-thirty city council meeting. So we will still be here at six o'clock for economic development. Tentatively, we will be having the following items, the business list feedback, new business list distribution, the twenty-twenty city events, Business Advocate update, Next Level Northwest update, items of interest in the Chamber of Commerce update. Also on that night, Tuesday, December third, at seven-thirty, but they will be in the EOC room, not here in the council chambers, because we'll all be here, we'll all be here, you all invited. But they will be at the seven-thirty in the EOC room, two-fifty here at City Hall on the second floor. Technically, tentatively, right now, there are two public hearings, or items of discussion that are going on. A request for an extension for the final approval for the subdivision of the two lots at twenty-six hundred Benton Street, that's in our R1 residential. Karen Stromalagia of Four Star Lane Incorporated is the petitioner on that. And then we continue our discussion on the workshop on the pending zoning code update. Obviously, I do want to mention two other items. For those that do not know, if you have not visited our website lately, we do have the Backyard Hen Coop application out there. So if you want any additional information, it's out there. It is a little bit larger than this, very easy to read, but that's just me, application. And then the final one that staff would like to wish everybody happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Do we want to keep that party going with the twenty-nineteen new businesses?
This is much shorter. We do have two items that were on the new business list. Obviously, one that I do want to mention is the first one, Autobahn Holding. They've been in the city for less, about probably six months or so, but they did get their business license. There was just a quick blurb on ABC last night about what they do. And again, if you want more information, they were in our Fourth of July Parade, and their autonomous driving solutions. If you want more information, I'm not the best person to talk to. Mayor Gallo is. I can just tell you what their business plan is, and that's it. So, but two new businesses that we do want to mention with everything. So with that, those are our new businesses for October.
Wonderful. Moving on, Director Horne with the traffic review for November.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items to update. We have several items that are currently in process. However, we did receive a letter from the Village of Schaumburg requesting that we revisit the Meacham Road widening issue, which we plan on bringing to City Council in December. And an item that the police department has requested, we review related to parking on Arbor Drive. We're, that's going to take a little time, because there were some historical agreements that were done that take some investigation. But otherwise, the agenda's updated, and if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
Wonderful. Thank you. That would bring us now to Keep the Wreath Red. Chief Valentino.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. The Rolling Meadows Fire Department is participating in Keep the Wreath Red. It's a program, and it's during the holiday season, which we are designating as November thirtieth through January first. And as you drive by the fire stations during this time, please take note of the wreaths that are displayed on the front of the buildings. These wreaths are illuminated with red lights. But however, if and when a fire is determined or to be caused related to a holiday decoration, one of the bulbs will be replaced with a white one. The program is really designed to remind the public of fire safety during this holiday season. We remind you that we totally discourage the use of traditional open flame candles. However, if you choose to use them, assure that they are ready, they are steady and secure, so that when they burn down, they will not affect any nearby objects. We also remind you that if you have not replaced or checked your smoke detector in October, that you do so at this time. And a smoke detector and carbon dioxide program will be rolling out soon for all, all residents. I'll talk about that at the committee of the whole meeting in December. And the fire department wishes everyone a joyous and fire-safe holiday season. And remember, keep the wreath red.
Thanks, Chief. From one notable program to another great cause, which is the Holiday Food Drive, Chief Nowacki.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. I know in two days, I'll be sitting down to a nice big turkey dinner with my family. I think I got about thirty people coming over. But the harsh reality is, though, there's numerous people in this, this area right here that really doesn't know where their next meal is going to come from. And we're very fortunate to have several food pantries. Like I said, Palatine Township, Elk Grove Township, some religious organizations, Harvest Bible has a food pantry. And we are going to do our part with the help of Crime Stoppers to help stock their shelves. This will be the fourth year in a row. We'll be at Jewel, as City Manager mentioned, December seventh, ten to two. Hope to see you there. I know our very first time we did our food drive with the police department, we were hoping to fill just one of our Humvee. It's a, like a police military jeep. That was our modest goal. The outpouring of support from the residents of Rolling Meadows, just the generosity, we filled that Humvee seven times over. Now, we actually get a truck from U-Haul, and we actually fill that up. So I will be out there December seventh, ten to two. I hope to see you there. I will have, by popular demand, my hundred-and-fifty-pound puppy, Penny. She's a Newfoundland. She'll be wearing a really bad holiday sweater. She does have some antlers, too, but she doesn't usually keep those on very long. So I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's definitely something positive to celebrate. Speaking of celebration and holiday celebration report, Ms. Cisak.
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, December fifth, at six PM, that's our start time for an old city tradition at a new location. Ring in the holidays with two events in one evening. At six PM, gather at the festive Rolling Meadows Historical Museum at thirty-one hundred Central Road for a joyous celebration with Santa, with Santa Claus and special guests to light up the city's holiday tree. Enjoy hot chocolate goodies and take a retro tour of the Holiday Historical Museum. Then take a short walk, a ride aboard a festive horse-drawn wagon to Willow Bend Elementary School at forty-seven hundred Barker Avenue to enjoy a complimentary spaghetti dinner while supplies last. Dinner hours will be from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM. Plan to visit and take pictures with Santa to top off the evening of holiday cheer. A special thanks to our event partners, the Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation volunteers, Rolling Meadows Historical Society, Willow Bend School, School District Fifteen, Rolling Meadows Senior Center Woodshop, Plum Creek Supportive Living, Trinity Lutheran Church, and the Rolling Meadows Park District. For more information, visit the city's website or call City Hall. We hope to see you there.
Thank you. Looking forward to all of these good things during the holidays. Moving on, now we have the next item, which is matters not on the agenda. Are there any items that are not on the agenda from the council? Alderman O'Brien?
Uh, just a real quick one. A follow-up to the last two meetings is the residents, a handful of them reached out, asked me to thank the council and the city for the support of the Rolling Meadows High School varsity football team during their amazing season. So some of the residents that asked the city to put it on the scrolling board and get the messages on their social media pages, they did ask me to pass on the thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Beniziano?
So I have two things. One, with all the talk of recreational marijuana, a topic near and dear to my profession is the opioid epidemic. But I did want to take this opportunity to share with all our residents that NCH does have a hotline for drug abuse or questions. They are right in our neighborhood, eight-four-seven-healing, that's eight-four-seven-four-three-two-five-four-six-four. They are available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And then the second thing is to thank our police, fire, hospitals, nurses, physicians, everyone working this holiday season while we're enjoying it with our families.
Thank you. Good to keep in mind. Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question for staff. I was wondering if we got an update yet on the appraisals for the property, when we could expect to see something in writing?
I know some of the pieces have been trickling, but I do not know the exact date when that's going out. I'll come back to us. But I know he was in town again on Monday and Tuesday, but I don't know when he's going to give us that.
Maybe could you see if you could touch base with him, maybe get us a date by the time of week?
I hope so, because I know he was going out of town for Thanksgiving, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Bessesi.
Thanks. First one, I'd like to congratulate the Rolling, the Rolling Meadows football team for their accomplishments. They should all be very proud of themselves for what they were able to accomplish this season. Second, I have received little to no feedback, positive or negative regarding the cannabis issue. So please contact me if you're in Ward Five. I'd like to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other matters? I just want to make one quick report, matters on the agenda. As Manager Crumstock mentioned, a company by the name of Autobahn AI recently moved to our community mid-end of summer. They're good friends of mine. They now are running a dedicated autonomous truck from Rockford to O'Hare on the Jane Adams, in conjunction with the Department of Transportation, the DOT. And they were in an article yesterday morning, the Chicago Tribune. They did get it wrong, and they mentioned Lyle, which was their historic place of business, but then they corrected it on the digital version. So we do get some Rolling Meadows accolade, and you reminded me of that with the Palatine mentions, Alderman Cannon. But furthermore, they were on WBEZ around noon, and then Channel Seven last evening. But after that, today, I received two additional phone calls from two other technology companies that specialize in mobility, traffic data management-type ecosystems. And they now are interested in moving toward Rolling Meadows. They were looking for a new location. And because of the work that we are doing here, or allowing to be done, it's perked up their ears, and it's a good thing for media, and I think it'll be a good thing for our community. The last thing beyond business and economic development is for everybody to have a good and safe Thanksgiving. Be grateful for that which you have, and I wish everyone the best until the next council meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.